Call a meeting to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance, to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for the invocation. Associate Pastor Gary Emmons is here with us from Christ Church.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we are a nation under God, and you built this nation. Father, there's a lot of work to be done tonight, and you have ordained these men and women to sit in these seats of authority. There is no authority that you have not ordained, so we ask you to lead them, Father, guide them for all the good that you have for this community and the blessings that you give these citizens. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor Gary for joining us. Roll call please Bev.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Here.
Councilmember Dickey.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Vice Mayor Yates.
Present.
Councilmember Hanson is absent. Councilmember Elke.
Here.
And Councilmember LaCheve.
Here.
Okay, I have three proclamations to read. The first is declaring October 5th through the 11th Fire Prevention Week. Whereas the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living in and visiting the town, and whereas fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire, and whereas home fires killed more than 2,300 people in the United States in 2012, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and fire departments in the United States responded to 365,000 home fires, and whereas working smoke alarms cut the risk of dying in reported home fires in half, and whereas three out of the five home fire deaths result from fires in properties without working smoke alarms, and whereas in one-fifth of all homes with smoke alarms, none were working, and whereas when smoke alarms should have operated but did not do so, it was usually because batteries were missing, disconnected, or dead, and whereas the residents of Fountain Hills shall install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping area, and on every level of the home, and whereas the residents of Fountain Hills shall install smoke alarms and alert devices that meet the needs of people who are deaf or hard of hearing, whereas the residents of Fountain Hills who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire, and whereas Fountain Hills first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and whereas town residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes, and whereas the 2014 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Working Smoke Alarms Save Lives, Test Yours Every Month," effectively serves to remind us that we need working smoke alarms to give us the time to get out safely. Now therefore I, Mayor Linda M. Kavanaugh, do hereby proclaim October 5th to the 11th, 2014 as Fire Prevention Week throughout the town of Fountain Hills, and I urge all town residents to test their smoke alarms at least every month by pushing the test button and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Fountain Hills Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2014. Second proclamation is declaring October 2014 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the town of Fountain Hills. Whereas home should be a place of warmth, unconditioned love, tranquility, and security, and whereas for most of us, home and family can indeed be counted among our greatest blessings, and whereas tragically for many Americans, these are blessings that are tarnished by violence and fear, and whereas women, men, young children, and the elderly are all counted among the victims of domestic violence, and whereas physical injury and deaths occur and emotional scars are often permanent, and whereas law enforcement officials, shelters, hotline services, healthcare providers, the clergy, and concerned citizens are helping in the effort to end domestic violence, and whereas we must recognize the compassion and dedication of these volunteers and professionals applaud their efforts and increase public understanding of this important problem, and whereas the Town Council approved Resolution 2013-44 on August 15, 2013, expressing support for the Start by Believing Campaign through the End Violence Against Women International Organization. Now therefore I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, Arizona, do hereby proclaim the month of October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in Fountain Hills, and urge all citizens to observe this month by becoming aware of the tragedy of domestic violence and supporting community efforts in working towards its end. Third proclamation, October 6th through the 10th Customer Service Week in the town of Fountain Hills. Whereas in 1992, the US Congress proclaimed Customer Service Week, a nationally recognized event celebrated annually during the first full week in October, and whereas the town of Fountain Hills is committed to providing the highest and most efficient level of customer service, and whereas the Town Council would like to express its sincere thanks and appreciation for the excellent service provided to the citizens of the town of Fountain Hills on a daily basis by all employees of the town of Fountain Hills. Now therefore I, Linda M. Kavanaugh, Mayor of the town of Fountain Hills, hereby proclaim October 6th through October 10th, 2014 as Customer Service Week in Fountain Hills, and respectfully ask all citizens to express thanks for the outstanding customer service provided by town staff throughout the year. Now I am going to read an announcement about the upcoming 2014 general election. This is to help you know when the dates are, what to expect for your ballot. November 4, 2014, general election is a mail ballot election for Fountain Hills voters. There will be no polling sites in Fountain Hills on Election Day. Monday, October 6, is the last day to register to vote in this election. Thursday, October 9, is the date that Maricopa County Elections will mail ballots to Fountain Hills voters who were registered by the deadline. Monday, October 13, Town Hall opens as a ballot replacement location during regular business hours, Monday to Thursday, 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., for those voters who have lost their ballot, do not receive their ballot in mail, or who spoiled their ballot, if your dog eats your ballot, right? That's a good one, too. Town Hall will provide a sealed blue ballot box as an alternative ballot depository for voters who do not wish to return their voted ballot in the signed and sealed affidavit envelope by mail. So if you don't want to put it in the mail, you can bring it to Town Hall, and there's a box there that's secured, and you can put it in the box. Maricopa County Elections will send voters their ballot in a yellow envelope. Watch the mail for the yellow envelope after October 9. The reason why we stress that is because a lot of the yellow envelopes look like the junk mail we get every day in the pile, so be careful, expect the ballot to look like a yellow envelope. The ballot received is not a sample ballot and should be voted, signed, sealed, and returned to Maricopa County Election prior to 7:00 p.m. on Election Day. Okay, so look for the yellow envelope, put your ballot in after you've voted, seal it up, and make sure you sign the outside. A lot of people didn't sign the outside, and they can't count your ballot unless you sign it, okay? So contact Bev, our town clerk, and if you have any questions about any of this, and we'll get it straightened out for you. Thank you. Okay. All right, now I will do my report on economic development. Okay, first, I wanted to mention that I attended the Environmental Excellence Awards in Scottsdale. These are awards given each year in building and architecture, wastewater and energy conservation, all sponsored by the nonprofits SRP and Arizona Forward. An awards recognition like this shows SRP's commitment to innovation in new fields of environmental conservation. I also attended my first MAGA Economic Development Committee meeting for this year. I was once again elected to represent the East Valley on that committee. We got updates on a lawsuit filed against the EPA for its approval of our 5% plan. That's where the EPA gave Arizona an air pollution exemption due to the heavy dust storms that we had experienced. It's that time again for clubs and organizations to start to meet once again. I've been giving updates around town. Last few weeks, I visited the Morning Rotary, Business Alliance, and the Men's Discussion Group. We also had our first school coalition meeting this morning. For those of you who don't know what the coalition is, it's an anti-drug and anti-alcohol group made up of school officials, MCSO, Boys and Girls Club, parents, community residents, government representatives of the county and the state, along with town representatives, myself, and Community Services Department, all coming together once a month to work to find solutions and take action to stop the flow of drugs to our school and educate the students to the dangers of drugs and alcohol. This is a great group of volunteers who are responsible for starting the Safe Homes Network, Text2Tip, the above-that club for middle school students and who are putting that new drug drop box in the lobby of Town Hall. Now you can drop off all your leftover pills, that kind of medication in the form of pills, anytime that the town lobby is open. The school would like me to tell you that October 9, they will be having Red Ribbon Day at the school. This national event is sponsored by the school, MCSO, and the town to bring awareness to the students about the dangers of drug use. And now on a personal note, I was quite honored to be featured in the League of Cities and Towns Newsletter this month. They chose me as their Economic Development Committee Spotlight on the Mayor Column. I'm excited to have been featured, but the recognition, remember, not only puts me in the spotlight, but also Fountain Hills, and that's always good for us. And that concludes my report. Okay, call to the public.
Nope, there's no one, ma'am.
Means I have to keep talking. Okay, we're going down to the consent agenda. We had three items on the consent agenda, but number three has been pulled by the applicant. That was a request of the applicant to pull that off. So we will just be considering number one and number two. Can I get a motion to approve?
Mayor Sumut.
And a second, and a roll call please.
Councilmember Dickey.
Aye.
Councilmember Elke.
Aye.
Councilmember LaCheve.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates.
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Mayor Six Zero.
Thank you. Now we go on to our regular agenda items. Number four, consideration of a 31-day time extension for the Avenue of the Fountains Median Improvements Project. Ken?
Mayor members of the council, the Development Service Director has a report and update regarding the request.
Mayor Kavanaugh, council members. The construction contract with Low Mountain Construction for the Median project was approved on April 3 of 2014. This was after approximately between a two- and four-week delay for a bid protest to have the registered contractors work that out. The notice to proceed for the project after the contractor submitted their proper permits, stormwater permits, and bonding was April 21, 2014. The contract includes 180 days for construction. That puts the final completion date on October 20, 2014. During the course of construction, we held monthly project meetings with town staff, the design team, and the contractor to discuss various project issues and schedules. In the middle of the project, the contractor lost approximately a month in July while waiting for the fountain embeds into the fountains. What this did is they needed those embeds in order to pour the concrete for the fountains, and the concrete for the fountains is what sets the grades for the plazas and the pathways and whatnot. So they lost some time there. During the course of the project, the contractor did, we asked for, and they did submit recovery schedules to show how they were going to meet the deadline. We did a substantial completion walkthrough, I believe, on September 19. There was obviously a lot of items on that list, and then on September 26, the contractor submitted a letter stating that they could not make the October 20 deadline for the project. And in that letter, which is attached, they cited manufacturer delays, rain delays, which we had a pretty wet monsoon season here the last two months, and they had hard dig for the SRP trenching, and then SRP, their crews to come out and set their equipment, and then additionally, the different crew comes out and pulls all the wire. Those crews were delayed due to weather as well because SRP had to reroute them to different projects. In reviewing the letter that the contractor submit, the staff doesn't agree with the delays from the manufacturer. That's on the contractor. They do have legitimate delays for rain. We had seven days built into the contract for rain delays, but this last storm and the rework they had to do earlier this week from the storm pushed them over those seven days, so they're over by two days there, so the town legitimately owes them two days on that end. And then when we looked at the SRP delays, it was, I think, a week and a half of working days, so legitimately, the contractor would be due 10 working days, which would bring the contract to October 31. The contractor has requested until November 7, but legitimately, we're saying October 31. However, and then we can enforce the contract, there's liquidated damages in the contract of $710 a day, but right now, after the rains, I called the sod farm, the contractor's been in contact with the sod farm, the sod supplier is pushing back all their clients one to two weeks. So now we're in a situation where the contractor cannot get the sod until the first week of November. So we could, you could issue liquidated damages, however, that will put the contractor in the position of putting that sod down as soon as possible to avoid penalties. What that does is if they put that sod down, let's say they get it, the supplier said they can get sod the first week in November, we don't know if that's the beginning of the week, the end of the week, or the next week. So if they put that sod down as soon as possible, we have to come back and turn the water off for four days during the art fair, and also put the construction fence up on the new grass. We don't want to take the chance of that brand-new sod dying because we're turning the water off and putting the fence up on it for the art fair. So with that said, we're actually asking for a longer extension of 31 days, and that gets us to November 21. So the intent is to get everything done before the fair, put the construction fence up on the dirt, when the fair's done, take that down, and have, hopefully, the sod suppliers ready by then, I'm sure they will be, have the sod delivered that week, plant the sod that week after the art fair, so then we can get the proper watering done. The contractor felt if they could get sod by the end of October, they could get it down. They really need about a good two weeks to get, they want to get that sod down before the landscaper felt comfortable with turning the water off for about four days. So we didn't want to put the contractor in a position where they need to rush and then compromise the overall quality of the project. Also, even if the contractor got the sod down, that construction, per the contract, that construction fence is staying up until the first week of December, so the median is not usable until the first week of December. So if they put the sod down after the art fair, we can get about a two-and-a-half-week grow-in before the Stroll and the Glow Event, the first weekend in September. We're going to ask the contractor to put in some stakes and some yellow rope to line the pathway and the plazas to hopefully keep people off the grass for a little bit. We'd have to work with the farmers market. They're already set up to start farmers markets in the Centennial Circle. Might try to keep them over there for one or two more weeks, and then you would probably see that avenue completely opened up second, third week of December. So with that, we have the architect here, representative from the contractor, so we can answer any questions.
Are we still going to be able to have the decorations for the holiday on Median?
We'll have to look at that. What we intend to do is it's in the contract that the contractor has to trim the existing trees. So they'll trim the existing trees, and the holiday lighting company will come in, and they'll trunk wrap the large existing trees. The new smaller trees don't get lighting. We'll have to look at the ground displays. The intent is to put them down, but that's something we need to look into. The contractor is responsible for 90-day maintenance of the median, and we'll have to get with the landscaper and see how they feel about having those in. So the landscaper, under their subcontract, has to come out weekly for three months, cut the grass, make sure the irrigation's working, and the power boxes that we have are rated for water, but until we really test them out, well, they're supposed to work, but we haven't been able to test it out. And with that said, SRP has been out recently, we have all the power, the contractor's ready to get, they're ready next week to start testing power.
Okay.
So we're on track with the power.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council. Paul, if we turn the water off, that voids our warranty on that turf.
Correct.
And that's one of our main concerns.
All right. Questions from council? Councilman Yates?
Paul, with regard to the sod, and then I'm sure we've got some questions for the contractor and the architect, that was always the intent, was to lay sod, or at one point, weren't we planning on planting grass?
No, it had sod in the contract. It wasn't overseeded sod, but now they're at the point where you can't get the regular sod from the sod farm, so they're going to be using overseeded sod. So yeah, originally, the contract called for regular sod, regular Bermuda that would go dormant, so.
Madam Mayor, my issue here is they weren't low bid, they were almost $100,000 more, respectfully. They issued a letter with regard to licensure. That took an extra two weeks, and then this last change order, respectfully, that SRP didn't get the load calculation right, but the opportunity was taken that, respectfully, that they came in with a change order of $67,000. I'm in this industry, I've got projects going on that we've had to deal with the rain delays and supply delays, et cetera, but one thing is we always have the crews out there. So again, respectfully, going up and down that avenue every morning, sometimes 5:00, 6:00, 7:00 in the morning, or when I come back at 4:00, 5:00, or 6:00, respectfully, I do not see a full crew out there that could have been knocking this out, so I've got a little bit of an issue asking, you guys asking for an extension when I don't feel like us, the municipality, who have been very open to the change orders and the letters and not going with low bid, that all of a sudden now we're behind the eight ball. So I'm open for discussion, but I've got real issue.
Okay.
Just have one quick question, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Sorry, go ahead.
Paul, with respect to, I understand the water being turned off for the fair. Now, in years past, it's because the booths are set up where they store their stuff on the median. In this case here, they're going to be offsetting away from the median, and there's going to be fence set up. Is there a way that we can adjust the sprinkler system to where we can water it without it spraying the fairgoers or?
Sure. The booths back up to the median, but the way the median is designed, it slopes from the center out to the curb, so as you water the grass, the water builds up, and it will actually run out into the curb a little bit. That could get into, the booths are designed to be right up to that curb and gutter. We also have the issue that if one of those sprinkler heads gets stuck, or if it goes a different way, and nobody's out there watching it, it could be spraying an artist's booth and all their art. That's something staff, the town, we discussed and didn't want to take that chance.
Is there no other remedy that we can do, I mean, to adjust, to make the sprinklers, you know, not as highly pressured, you know, to do something to adjust it so that they're watering, or have maybe somebody monitoring it a little bit more closely? And will, four days, I guess in the follow-up, and will, four days, you know, how will that affect?
If the sod is freshly planted, within probably that first week, week to two weeks, you don't want to turn the water off to that sod.
What's the watering schedule?
It would have to be watered twice a day for that first week, week and a half, two weeks.
And how long is it watered each time, Mayor, if I may?
Oh, I don't.
Is it half an hour at a time, an hour at a time?
I don't.
About 10 minutes, actually three times a day.
Per station? Yeah, it'd be, so he said 10 minutes, three times a day.
So 30 minutes a day that it would need to be watered, or at least perhaps monitored during the watering schedule? And I think?
If that's something the council wants, we can request the contractor to be present.
Okay.
Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, I wouldn't recommend that because of the thousands of dollars of that artwork that's going to be sitting right next to it. You can't guarantee it. We can't guarantee that. There could be water damage, and guess what? We're buying.
Art.
We're buying a lot of art. I mean, we had, last year, we had that issue. We had one of the fountains stick, and it went, you know, it went vertical, I guess is the best way to put it, getting over there to try to resolve that to keep some of those booths from getting wet.
Right.
So I'd be very cautious about that. Second part, I also want to add that wasn't mentioned is that, remember, when we started this project, we also almost had a month's delay just because of a bid protest. So we had already lost that cushion because of that.
Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So explain to me, Paul, how the SRP delay occurred?
Sure. Well, there's two delays. We're not really counting the hard, some of the hard dig, but when they had to dig from Paul Norton and Verdi River, out to Verdi River, they encountered some very, very rocky conditions, so they had the hard dig there, the added time. The main thing was getting power to the site. SRP had crews set up to come out and set all the transformers on the corner of Verdi River and Avenue of Fountains to get power to the site so they could continue with their It wasn't one of the last rain, it was probably two rainstorms ago, so they were supposed to come out, and SRP had to redirect our crews. So they didn't come out till like the next week to set the power, or set the equipment. Then a separate SRP crew needs to come out and pull the wires, and that crew got delayed by a rainstorm getting redirected, and we had to pull a lot of strings to just get them to come out early.
So I've got to explain that right now, the project could have, every pedestal could be completely wired from the panel to the pedestal, every pump could be wired from the panel to the pump without power. I'm not buying this song and dance at all about SRP delaying this project, not for one second, because the power could be turned on a week before the project's done.
Well, there's, there's two delays. We're not really counting the hard, some of the hard dig, but when they had to dig from Paul Norton and Verdi River, out to Verdi River, they encountered some very, very rocky conditions. So, they had the hard dig there, the added time. The main thing was getting power to the site. SRP had crews set up to come out and set all the transformers on the corner of Verdi River and Avenue of Fountains to get power to the site, so they could continue with their, with their work. It was, wasn't one of the last rain, it was probably two rainstorms ago. So, they were, they were supposed to come out, and SRP had to redirect our crews. So, they didn't come out till like the next week to set the power, or set the equipment. Then, a separate SRP, SRP crew needs to come out and pull the wires. And that crew got delayed by a rainstorm, getting redirected, and we had to pull a lot of strings to just get them to come out early.
So, I've got to explain that right now, the project could have every, every pedestal could be completely wired from the, from the panel to the pedestal. Every pump could be wired from the panel to the pump.
Mm-hmm.
Without power. I'm not buying this song and dance at all about SRP delaying this project, not for one second, because the power could be turned on a week before the project's done, and it will be fine. We build all the time without power. I mean, you can complete the entire project, and SRP can't be blamed for that. And the hard dig, not buying into that either. I didn't hear one hammer, one time, on the back of a backhoe anywhere in town during this process. I'm not buying into it. I, the job has been poorly manned. I've taken more calls about the Avenue of the Fountains than I have, than I did on the trash hall. I mean, my phone has rung at least once or twice a week for the last three months about where are the people? What are they doing? Oh, well, you know, staff tells us they're on schedule. We're going to make our schedule. Well, I tell you how I really feel about it. I really feel like they need to roll their sleeves up, and they need to go out there, and they need to go to work, and act like they're trying to get this job done, because right now, they're not. I mean, it is, it is actually a joke, and it's, ask anybody that works on the, on the avenue about how many people are there. And it's a joke. And as far as I'm concerned, they can figure out how to get the sod put in, so we can water it long enough, so we have, when we have our fair, if we have to shut the water off, good. We've got snowbirds coming to town. I mean, our life, our lifeline is just, just beginning, and it was all planned around this, and due to absolutely the lack of management, or the lack of employees out doing the jobs, they didn't get their work done. It's time, they were told, roll your sleeves up and go to work. I won't support, I won't support one day of this. I don't, no, I'm sorry. I did, I went to the Weather Bureau, and, and we did have actually eight days of rain during the course of this project. So, I won't give them two, but I'll give them one rain day. And that's about it. I mean, I just, I just, it's absolutely embarrassing what they've done to us.
Okay. Any other comments? Councilman Elke?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Brown, and the points that Councilmember Yates brought up earlier, too. We've had the contract. We went through great pains to work around the schedule with the chamber, to make sure that we did this right, and, you know, I'm certainly in no way faulting staff, and I hope that's not coming across from this council, because I don't think anybody on the council is faulting staff for this. But we've been told repeatedly that we're on schedule. We're on schedule, we're on schedule, even at the last meeting. I think I asked our town manager if we're on schedule, and yep, that's the information that we have. And you know what? When people in this town ask me, is that going to get done? That's what we're being told. It's on schedule. So, it's quite embarrassing to now have this come before us, and to say, no, they're not on schedule. And you know what? I've seen the same things that you have, and the same things that Councilmember Brown just said from the outset, that this wasn't manned properly. You see a few guys standing out there, you know, not doing a whole lot, or very few guys out there. And, you know, frankly, I'd give them that one day if what Councilmember Brown has said is correct, that there's been an additional rain day. You know, we certainly account for that, but beyond that, I wouldn't be in favor of giving it, get it done. Make it happen is all I have to say to Low Mountain at this point.
Other comments? Comments?
Mayor, if I may, just a question. Paul, the most, the most recent rain, I know that they were putting sand down and getting ready to put pavers.
Sure.
Can you be, can someone be more specific about what damage was done during this last storm?
Sure. During, during this last storm, they lost the Saturday for the rain that they were scheduled to work, and they had to do rework on Monday and Tuesday, when all the, the sand bedding got washed out, and it actually got underneath their brick pavers, and they had to remove a bunch of pavers and redo the underlayment, and redo those as well.
Was there any other damage?
Nothing.
No.
Not that I'm aware of. But they had to do a lot of rework on the brick pavers that they already relayed.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you, Mayor. On the 18th, I think Councilman Elke did ask how things were going, and I think the answer was the end of October. So, and the fair starts on the 14th, is that right? Is that?
Mm-hmm.
I wasn't sure which weekend it was. So, again, you know, I've been impatient with people who have been, you know, yelling at me about what's going on, too, and I think it's sort of what we've all been going through. And then, so I'm kind of like, hey, you know, it's on time. So, I know it doesn't look like anything's happening, but it's on time.
Sure.
And it's just very, it is frustrating, and so I really hope that we can get this done quicker than that.
Sure. And to respond to that, through the course, even up till the last meeting, the contractor was submitting recovery schedules and telling us about the increased manpower for the landscaping and the landscapers and whatnot. We were told there'd probably be about 15 landscapers out there working on the landscaping and the brick pavers. And I know that didn't happen initially, and they have been ramping up the manpower. And then we had the letter come in that they weren't going to make it. So, but with that said, regardless of liquidated damage or not, the schedule's going to be what the schedule's going to be based on when they can get the sod.
Mm-hmm. You have another comment?
I've got a question.
Oh, sure.
Thank you, Mayor. Who's the sod company?
Evergreen. Evergreen.
Are they the only sod company in town? Are they the only?
No, they're not the only sod company in town.
Well, it's a little bit like the episode buying the embeds for the pool. Is Roma the only manufacturer of the pool embeds?
That was the manufacturer specified in the, in the contract, in the architectural drawings.
And, and there were no ad alternates to that? Nobody even discussed the possibility of saving 30 days?
They could submit an equal product prior to bid. None of the bidders submitted an equal product.
But to save 30 days, was there not even discussion during your weekly meetings about the possibility of going out and sourcing another embed that would satisfy the architect?
I believe Roma and Fountains required payment upfront, and then, then the arch, the landscape architect, the contractor was continuously calling them, sending them emails, trying to get those embeds out.
And where's Roma located? California?
The contractor thought it was California.
Mm-hmm, okay. All right, well, I think pretty much everybody's been feeling the same thing. First of all, embarrassment that we go around, and I just went around to three meetings and said the same thing. We're on schedule, don't worry, it'll be done. They're telling us we're on schedule, and I, I know, you know, I'm there every day and early in the morning, and see a couple of guys out there working at one end or the other end, but I think we all kind of felt the same thing, that they should have been working a little bit harder on it.
In, in discussions with the contractor last week, they were telling me how they would be ready for sod if they could get it towards the end of the month.
Yeah.
But.
I mean, I could tell the, the day that they stepped up the work, because that was the day I came in and said, wow, look at all those guys out there.
Sure.
If we would have had them all out there more often, we'd probably be okay, so.
And, and I just want to clarify on the rain days, they have submitted a letter for the rain days, and the staff does feel that with the rework they had to do, that, that two, two rain days are legitimate with rework.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Mayor, if I may, please, just hypothetical, I want to see how this plays out. It, the sense I get is council's going to be drawing a line in the sand here with respect to an extension. So, you just mentioned two, two more days. So, our original deadline was October 20th, now, so now we're at October 22nd.
Right.
Tell me how this is going to play out. If, if they don't, if everything is not completed by the October 22nd, that includes the sod being in place.
Sure.
Help, help me understand, and for the, for the benefit of the public, if on October 22nd's not finished, I want them to have an expectation of what, why, and what it's going to look like.
If it's not finished? What's going, you, on October 22nd, you would probably have the fountains, the pathways done, kind of waiting for, just waiting for sod. There could be, you know, a little bit of minor work details. We would have to go out and do, do another walk-through. And, and we would put the, if the 22nd, if there was a two-day extension and 22nd came, we would put the contractor on notice of liquidated damages. It's $710 a day. When the contractor submit, submits payment applications, we withhold 10% up to the first half of the project, then 5% after that. So, we actually have about $40,000 to $50,000 withheld from the contractor right now over the course of the project. So, at the end of the project, when that final date is determined that the project's done, we would see how many days they went over, assess 710 days, and withhold that much from their last payment.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
I have one quick question.
Councilman Elke?
Paul, is there any action that needs to be done by the council with respect to those two rain days? Or is that built into the contract already?
No, I mean, that, since they formally requested, a motion would be good. We can do it administratively, but a motion would be good.
All right.
All right.
Andrew, is, you concur with him?
Madam Mayor, Councilman Elke, it's a no-cost change order, and so those are typically handled administratively, so the town manager has the authority to sign them without council direction. But because it was on the agenda, I think Mr. Moon's asking for direction on how many days are authorized, so that we're all on the same page. I think one of the things that, that Councilmember Yates' question was asking, though, is also what's it going to look like regardless of schedule? Is like construction, construction fencing going to still be out there? How long would that be under any circumstances, so everybody gets an idea?
The construction fencing will stay up till the first week of December, no matter what. That was the original plan, to keep people off the grass, to let it grow in.
Okay. Any other? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, we're planting 88 trees or something like this?
A little over 60.
Okay. Thank you. So, when will they start planting their trees?
The, the landscape architect has been to the nursery and tagged all the trees, and I guess those can go in, once the irrigation's in.
Is the irrigation not in?
It's being put in right now.
Well, it seems to me that the first half of the avenue from Avenue of the Fountains, except for the first entrance, the pavers appear to be coming along nicely, and I would guess a short two days will have those completed, or it appears to be.
Yeah, the pavers on the east, east half of the median should be done by Mon, this weekend, by Monday.
And so, I would certainly like to think, since it takes about as long to bury those, dig the holes and bury your trees, that I would like to see some action start up, so in the event that we are able to find some sod to put in, that the trees would be in, and we wouldn't be held up again. I would like to see the project move forward opposed to just setting completely still.
Okay. Vice Mayor?
And Paul, for the record, we don't have a prepaid sod contract, correct?
I don't know what arrangement.
To complement Brown's point, we could look for another sod.
I don't know what arrangement their landscape sub has with the current sod farm.
Would you mind answering that question?
Could you come up, please? And identify yourself, please? Tell us who you are.
My name's Wayne Hatch, and I'm with Low Mountain Construction. Thank you for the question. There's actually two or three sod farms that have sod, all of them, as we have talked with them all, have put off because of all the rain. The problem we're having is not that there is no sod, there's plenty of sod, it's just that they overseed the sod at a certain point. And that overseeding usually is taking place earlier, but because of the storms and the things that have happened, all of the sod farms haven't been able to do their overseeding. And so, they've put everyone off, oh, about two weeks. Earlier this week, we were told we could have sod right at the end, close to the end of October. They just last night contacted us and said, we've, we just, we can't get on it, we can't overseed it, we can't get the stuff done. And so, they've all put it back till, they're saying first week of November. First week of November, to me, is, that's the second or the third. I don't think that's what they mean, but, but yeah, we've called them all, and there's nothing that's been prepaid. If we can get sod, we'll get sod. I mean, we'll be ready to put sod in.
Madam Mayor.
Vice Mayor?
As a second, couldn't we overseed it ourselves? Couldn't you overseed it?
Well, the problem is that all sod farms right now quit cutting, period.
Oh, you're not.
Because they go in to overseed everything. They just, they just quit cutting, and they just overseed automatically. So, yes, we could have, but we can't now, because we can't get sod.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. If not, then we're looking for a motion. Does anyone like to give me a motion?
Mayor?
Councilman Brown?
Mayor, I move to allow a two-day extension to the contract, which would move the legal date to October 23rd, 2014.
Second.
Any further council discussion? Any, any speaker cards on this item?
No, Mayor.
All right. Then, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 6-0.
All right. Consideration with possible direction to staff regarding developing and implementing a town-wide stormwater environmental fee. Ken?
Mayor, Kavanaugh, members of the council, as you know, the last council retreat earlier this year suggested that another discussion occur regarding an environment, the consideration of an environmental fee. You have in your council package some of the information that was related to the 16-odd discussions, I guess, over the past number of years, since, I guess, 2007, to address this unfunded mandate by EPA, which prompted this from the, from the adoption of the U.S. Clean Water Act. The town Fountain Hills is required to have a municipal separate storm sewer system, or what they call an MS4 permit, to administer a stormwater management plan and its various requirement, required maintenance programs that was adopted back in 2003 and amended in 2006. And there's, there's some very pointed required activities that are included with that. It's called public education, public participation, involvement, review of, an investigation of all illicit discharge detection and elimination, the construction site runoff control, post-construction runoff control and pollution prevention, those six. Those activities within those six to help comply is street sweeping, storm drain, culvert inspection and cleaning, drainage parcel inspection, on-call storm debris cleanup, household hazardous waste collection, wash, maintenance, Arizona Department of Water Resources dam inspection and maintenance, illegal dumping investigations, the dues to all the groups that we belong to, that we find what the latest best management practices are regarding this, as well as the ADQ stormwater permit itself, and the fees that it has there. We also have to administer water discharge permits for the use of that effluent on municipal parks that we use. So, each one of those has a, has a discharge permit, and there's a cost associated with those, as well as Maricopa County dust control block permits. We have to do right off the top because of the air quality issues that we have in Maricopa County. So, in considering an environmental fee, there's some other, some further information that you should take into consideration. Remember, what we actually have to, what we're responsible for is, we have 73,200 linear feet of storm drains, culverts, and channels in this community. We got 1.9 million linear feet of curb and gutter, and our 177 miles of streets that we have. And with that, that residential streets are cleaned once every, on a two-month cycle, and arterials are cleaned, cleaned on a three-month, a three-week cycle. So, it's a very aggressive sweeping plan. There's 407 catch basins in the community, where 25 are inspected annually, 700 acres of town-owned washes that we're responsible for, and six town-owned dams designated by the Arizona Department of Water Resources that have to be certified by ADWR for that, and, and one non-AD, ADR, ADWR town-owned dam. Currently, the town has absorbed about $273,000 annually to, of existing revenues, especially like in this year, the 2014 and 15 annual budget, toward the various required programs to adhere to the stormwater management plan, as well as air quality mitigation measures for street sweeping. There's about another $200,000 in, in other projects such as household hazardous waste collection that's actually gone unbudgeted this year. The town, over the past five-year period between 2008 and 14, as just a representative example, the town spent $1.1 million, almost $1.2 million in that, that period regarding these activities that we've, I just alluded to. We've not discussed an alternative billing arrangement with any of the utilities in town to date, with current staff, that we've addressed. town to date with current staff that we've addressed this issue. And the property parcel method that we were, could be a consideration, along with the other consideration that's on the table, which is the utility meters, as a consideration to look at some form of a revenue that would be based on those for the collection of a fee to help offset these costs. We've absorbed these costs like we've absorbed everything else for the last 25 years, from street maintenance to fire services, to a number of other things. This is just added to that list. Lastly, the billing and collection process. If we're not able to discuss a utility billing measure with other entities in the town, we would have to look at our own billing and collection process. And that'd be required to purchase an additional software through our existing software accounting system and billing system, which was an estimated about $80,000 for software and training that we would have to put in a future budget. Collection of the fees would be another challenge, since the town doesn't have a current utility billing process or collection process. And town payment and non-payment and collection of those debts is going to be another challenge with that as well. So staff will be happy to answer any further questions. We understand that it is, there's still a few holes in this, based on the last discussions, because the last discussion back in, I believe, '07 was a very comprehensive approach in looking at what this was. We wanted to find out if the council wanted to take, as we talked about in the retreat, a consideration and possible direction if you wanted us to seek further of this type of a program. We'd be happy to answer any questions or follow up on anything that you might have.
How much of a fee are, is this being proposed? What kind of a fee is this? How much is it?
We've seen, we can only tell, I can only say that from a comparison basis, that it's usually around a $3 fee is what we're seeing from the adjacent communities that have initiated their programs.
$3 fee a month?
Yes, based on a water meter.
Okay.
But they have utility systems, water and sewer.
So if you had someone else do the collection, then you'd have to pay them to do the collection?
They would.
And that would have to come out of that fee?
I'm sure that there would be a fee charged, yeah. Billing is not a cheap process.
Okay. Otherwise, according to our packet, it would be over $70,000 in software to do this ourselves, and then you have to have the cost of mailing, right?
The annual operation mailing, which would be determined whether it's going to be on a monthly or quarterly or semi-annual basis.
And how would you go after people who didn't pay?
You'd have to look at a collection process, usually a collection service.
For like $36 a year?
That's a challenge, as I mentioned.
Vice Mayor.
What's the commission on collection right now?
Well, my experience from my previous life, which we had the system, it's usually 50 cents on the dollar.
Vice Mayor.
No, I don't like the idea at all, but just for round numbers, if everybody in town who lives in town, roughly 22,000, 23,000 people, if everyone would spend about 35 bucks a month, whether it be going out to dinner or buy a sweater or something, that would pretty much pay for this. Just want everyone to know that economic development could fix this, in round numbers.
And then they'd have the sweater.
And then they'd have the sweater, a nice meal, or a set of tires, or whatever, about 450 bucks a year.
Okay.
Not even. Thank you.
Any other council discussion? Councilman Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. So, in 2007, Councilman Legay and Councilwoman Dickey were on the council, and they were the only two that were privileged to the lengthy conversations, which I read parts of that. And before I jump in and really make a strong statement, I would recommend possibly having a work-study session and bringing us all up to speed and not, I mean, right now, I couldn't make a good decision if I had to.
Mayor Kevin, I'm here with the council. We would, then we need to look at some direction a little bit on helping us, which way do you want to look at, so that we can go out and, do you want to help, do you want us to go seek partners to help us with the bill collection? It's going to be difficult, but we can. And bring that back to you, or we can look at our own system and refine those numbers as well. Preferably, I'd rather do it ourselves.
Okay, well, I think the other thing that we have to consider right now, and I think we're all being inundated by residents contacting us about this water rate hike, we're talking about, if everything goes through, the way the corporate commission has accepted, has given the money to Epcor, has allowed them with the CIB, and after five years, RUCO is estimating that our water bills are going to be 43% higher than they are right now. Now, people have only gotten, right now, a small increase. There's a lot more coming. And if we can't get that change, then this is what people are going to be facing, 43% increase. I personally do not want to add any more fees or taxes onto the people. I mean, I agree with the Vice Mayor, I would rather somebody go out and spend the money on something, and we get the tax money and they get goods or services for it, they'll get the sweater, or they'll go out to eat, or something like that. Because I can't see adding more burden on people, not from what I hear about that people can't even afford the water. I mean, I'm hearing people are turning off their drip systems, they're, I mean, they're really doing drastic changes to their lifestyle right now, just to meet this water increase, and they haven't even gotten the big brunt of the increase that's coming. So if we can't get any changes to that, then we have to seriously consider adding another tax onto the people. So I can't support this in any form. Anybody else would like to comment?
Mayor, I'm here with the council. There was a suggestion for a work session to discuss further? Is that still on the table?
Councilwoman Dickey?
One thing I wanted to mention, a couple of things, actually. Obviously, the discussion has come about all of these times, because it's not only just because we were talking about a stormwater fee, it was because we were talking about the revenue problems that we've had for all these years. So even though it looks like we brought it up 1,000 times, it was really always part of a conversation that we will, we have and will continue to have, which is to try to address some of the issues. The little form, I mean, the spreadsheet that we have here is, you know, about 10 to 14, that we spent 1.1 million, and then what the general fund has had to endure. But the fact of the matter is that, and this is why I brought that last item out, for the $920,000, about the Ashbrook wash last time, is because I was always asking, whenever one of these kind of projects came up, I would always ask, would this be something that would be covered by an environmental fee if we had one, because of the huge amounts? And so really, this is, you know, showing us what we're spending, but the capital is huger, or more huge. 2013, 14 was only 126,000, but 14, 15 is 1.7 million for Ashbrook and miscellaneous drainage. And then I also, so I had asked that to be included in this packet, but it isn't, the capital items. The other is this projected capital projects that we had in our budget, which is, over the next several years, 10 years maybe, over $8 million worth of projects. That would be covered by this kind of a fee. So, again, we look at the fire station relocation. The money that we're using to cover these is the money that comes out of the roads. So when people are, why didn't we pay attention to the roads, or whatever, if you're paying $600,000, $700,000 every year or so, or every three years on culverts and things that really aren't that visible, obviously, then it's really depleting our ability to meet some of these other needs. And the 2.1 million that we've been putting off on the fire station all these years would have easily been taken care of if we were collecting $450,000 a year for $3 a month, or however you want to look at it. So, you know, there's obviously different ways to look at this. The other times that we looked at it and didn't do it, it was because we said, okay, let's try the property tax, and of course, that didn't work. So again, we've had this conversation, where you have to make a decision of what kind of a town you want. So, and I think what really illustrated that was at our retreat, when Paul went through all the trouble and showed us all of our roads for the next 10 years and all of the needs, and Councilman Elke basically said, why are we even looking at that? We will never be able to do that. So that is what we're saying. And, you know, I'm not going to beat myself over the head trying to get this through, but I'm just trying to say that this conversation will not change at your next retreat, at the retreat after that, because these are basic municipal needs. And this is a very fair way to do it, because the things that we need to do with this money are a result of the people who live here, and the driveways, and all of those things. So, again, tax fee, whatever you want to call it, it's revenue, it's revenue that's needed for infrastructure. And if there is no reason to have a work-study session because everybody's resolute on the ideology of it rather than the reality of it, then, you know, I would say, don't bother having it.
Any other comments? Councilman Elke?
We did talk about this at length during the work study, and I think it's been talked about at length at previous work studies, so I don't, I wouldn't encourage us to go forward and have another work study, because that's like asking to have another study done to tell you something that you already know the answer to, kind of like our transit survey. But, in any event, I think during the last work study, when we did discuss this, I'd like to take credit for it, but it was Councilmember Hanson that said something to the effect that the town can't keep absorbing certain costs without having other revenue sources, such as the road district first, the fire district was something that was absorbed under, and actually, taxes were increased at that time. And I think at the time, they believed that a property tax would pass and take care of everything, but we know how that played out. And with the town continuing to have these additional unfunded mandates, whether it's through the federal government or through the state government, I mean, we've got to have ways to pay for it, otherwise, I mean, we're pretty lean as it is, and I'm very proud of that. And I want to continue to stay lean. But if we have these things that are coming up like we do, and I think at different times, we've had fire come up and addressed during the dry season, during the summer months, when we start talking about these washes and getting them cleaned out, because they are a potential fire hazard and a danger to the community. That's one thing to be aware of as well. And Councilmember, or, excuse me, Vice Mayor Yates, I too would like to see everybody spend an additional $35 a month, which would generate $10.5 million in more revenue, we'd have a lot more businesses in town, we'd have about 273,000 in additional sales tax revenues. I'm with you, the reality of it is, it's not going to happen. I'm not a, you know, I'm not a defeatist or anything like that, I am, I think, a realist. And we don't have the population, and I don't think we have the revenue streams for people to spend an additional $35 a month. And if they have that additional $35 a month to spend, three additional dollars a month towards this tax fee, however you want to characterize it, isn't going to break the bank either. So, we're talking about $36 a year versus $35 a month. So if we're really concerned about the water rates going up and people having to compensate for that, well, I think we have to take into account, well, if the federal, if the Fed changes the tax rates, then we need to count for that. If the state imposes additional fees, we need to count for that. We need to be able to take care of what we have here, and I think this deserves further discussion. And I would be in favor of directing staff to give us some hard numbers. I know we've got some information, the town manager gave us, kind of some things that we have talked about before, but give us some hard numbers as far as, this is what it's going to cost if we contract with sanitary district to collect it, or with Chaparral, or whomever it's going to be, if that's even an option. And if it's not an option, then we know which direction that we would go as far as software and training, if in fact, a future council decides to do this. So, you know, let's just, you know, be real. And if we're not going to do it, we're not going to do it, but let's not, you know, throw out false numbers.
I'm satisfied right now with the way the town is headed. We decided that we were going to hire an economic development specialist. We put money into that, we hired Scott Cooper, he's bringing some business into town. I'm optimistic that now that he's going strong and the economy is looking good, as far as Scott's concerned, that we are going to bring more business to town. We just okayed a big tractor supply company that has an annual income of $4 million. They're going to have jobs for people. So I'm optimistic about businesses coming back. He's filling office space with a food industry that's going to be coming in. So he's starting to make progress, and Scott's only part-time. I'd rather put the money into Scott to go out there and get the business. We're also seeing a Darrow Canyon coming in. Darrow Canyon's going to add like over 300 units, so, and that's going to save copper winds. So, you know, we're moving forward, because the direction we wanted to go was economic development, and now we're, it's almost like we just don't want to wait and make this happen. This is a better way to go than just always thinking about adding a tax onto people. I'd rather go economic development, let's get Scott maybe even full-time, and get him out there working, because all the residents are going to benefit by more stores being here, by the businesses that are here thriving instead of suffering. We've got, probably going to have a good season, the snowbirds are already here early because of the cold weather. So I think we're going to do okay. And I'd much rather go that way than add any more taxes onto people, especially now, when they're going to be hit with a lot more taxes and that. So I wouldn't want this to go any further. Do you want? Councilman Legay?
Thank you, appreciate it. You know, Councilman Brown alluded to the fact that this discussion started in 2007, and every year after that, we've been optimistic, and what you just shared with us, Mayor, was extremely optimistic. But here we are, several years later, and we're having the same conversation. And the conversation is generated by the fact that we have a revenue shortfall in this town. And once again, if we want to look at reality, you know, I'm all for, you know, enhancing business, supporting business in this town, I've been doing it for 22 years personally, when I could be shopping over the hill. The math is just really interesting, and we've talked about this before. This silver bullet we keep referring to as economic development that's going to be the savior of all of our issues in town, needs to generate $45 million in sales, just to generate revenue for the town of $900,000. Now, that's not going to happen overnight, and we continue to have to degrade our systems. For example, looking at this chart in front of us, what is one of our priorities as a council, is our core services. And one of our priorities is pavement management and pavement replacement. And what are we doing here? We're using our HERF money that should be used for pavement replacement, pavement management, and we're basically not using those dollars on our roads. We know that we've lost money from the state by taking away our HERF monies. We have all these unfunded mandates. The water company is raising their fees, that's unfortunate, we don't benefit from that. Everyone is raising their fees, we don't benefit from that, and we continually take the hit and say that economic development is going to be the savior. I think it's worth taking one last look at this, because frankly, I'm really not interested in discussing this as we move into a new council. Take one last look at it in a work study, crank the numbers, I mean, it doesn't have to be $3 a month, it could be $2 a month. We just need to take a look at it. And frankly, we need to pay now or pay later, because what we're going to be doing is probably having to come up with some other scenario to pay for our roads, or do a bond a lot sooner. I mean, at the end of the day, we need to determine what type of community we want to be, and I'm all for economic development, and it's certainly not the silver bullet, but keep in mind, just do the math, we have to generate an additional $45 million in We have to generate an additional $45 million in sales in this town to generate about $1 million for use in our general fund. Thank you.
Any other comments? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thank you. I had a question for you, Councilwoman Yates. Did you say it was $36 per person? So it was 22,000 people?
Yeah, and round numbers. To the point, $10 million of additional sales in some way, shape, or form, on average, would generate the 260,000 in round numbers, which would pay the 273. To Councilmember Leger's point, you know, $3 or adjusting that up, we're back to, all right, how many water meters do we have that we are taxing? You know, do we have 100,000 meters in town that we can tax?
Well, that's a good point, Cecil, because the idea that people, every single human being in a household would spend that much money per month, I mean, it's a nice goal too, but we're talking $3, but it's not just residents. The residents in Fountain Hills have taken the hit for everything. The businesses, they collect sales tax. They're pass-through. They have to collect them, and they have to give them to the state and to the city. But again, these roads that we are trying to fix were paid for with property taxes by people like me and people who lived here for a long time, because we had a property tax to build our roads. Now, I appreciate the businesses that are here, but the actual, out-of-they're-pocket assistance for public safety, so if they catch on fire or if they get robbed, and for infrastructure, for roads to lead to their stores, has been paid for by residents. So this is actually, to me, fairer than saying each person that lives here needs to spend more money, and the businesses continue to exist and get the benefit of being in a beautiful community, which is clean and safe. And if they catch on fire, they do 911, and they have roads, and we pick up when there's a storm. But, you know, to say that their collection of sales tax pays for that is, yeah, technically, but it's a pass-through. So I think it's fairer that the entire community helps to pay for the infrastructure that we all benefit from.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you, Councilwoman Dickey. As you know, I'm a big believer in the market. I'm a big believer in what the citizens have told us. The two times that they've tried to put a primary property tax, one failed really bad and the second one failed miserably. And what the people are telling us is, we don't want a primary property tax. We don't want any additional tax, having moved here from the Midwest. I was way over. My home was a third of the value, and I paid four times the tax. And as well as if you have a business, inventory tax, property, you name it, every layer. But what the citizens of Fountain Hills have told us is, give us something concrete and let's use the road bond. We knew what it was, how much it was going to cost, and it passed incredibly. So the people are telling us, package it in such a way we know exactly what it's for, what it's going for, give them the opportunity, passing it the way we're talking about. And maybe it's just a matter of semantics, meaning this isn't the best model. And maybe it does come down to, as Ken mentioned, that we may have to set up our own thing, but I'm more apt at this point to listen to what the people are telling us. They do want economic development, and I know it sounds like the silver bullet and all that, but I'm seeing this around the valley. There are some neat things happening. Is it going to happen next year that we're going to collect an extra $10 million of sales, which results $260,000? Maybe not. But to the Mayor's point, that one business, that one tractor sales that averages $4 million bucks, that's $26,000. I'm sorry, that's, excuse my math. What is that? 40, 50, 100 grand in the bucket, right there. So it can happen. It doesn't need many, and it's not just putting the burden on all the citizens that they have to spend the $35, but it's just an example. Obviously, if we have, every time we have a fair, all those people coming in, what they're spending, that pays for it. We're talking semantics. How do we generate more sales tax? But the people of Fountain Hills have told us they don't want a tax. These are the tools we have, so I'm trying to be optimistic.
All right, thank you. Comments? Councilman Elke?
Just to that, Vice Mayor, people in town have come to me and said, "I don't want it to pay a business license fee," which is a tax, I suppose. People have come to me and said, "I don't want to pay a dog tag fee," which I suppose is a tax as well. Those are various things that I've heard out there also. And we've just got to be able to pay for the things that we're going to pay for. I mean, this town is fickle when it comes to businesses in which the town collects sales tax revenue from. We've all seen, I mean, anybody that's been here for a year will see the opening and closing of probably two or three restaurants. I mean, and I know that the Little Caesar's that we have in town, the Arby's that we have in town, is one of the most underperforming restaurants in the state. And it doesn't surprise me. The people go down the hill. We don't have a huge population. We had a Dunkin' Donuts in town, the only donut shop in town. It closed. Why? Because it didn't have business. We had Taco Bell. Taco Bell, they closed. I mean, these are different restaurants that have been here and gone. And, you know, economic development, economic development, I mean, that, we're just talking about more, what, retail sales? The Target here, you go there any day of the week, you're probably first in line. I can't imagine they're doing that well. So we've got to be able to pay for things. And I would be in favor of at least giving the town manager and staff direction to get some further hard numbers and bring this before our council in the future. And in that, I would make a motion that we direct the town staff and town manager to get some additional information with respect to numbers and collecting mechanisms that were discussed previously.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion. I have another comment that I'd like to make in reference to what Councilman Elke said. Yes, we have had some stores that closed, but we've also had some great stores that opened. I think everybody knows, we've got another great restaurant in town, Ariva Durchi's. We've got Mojo's. We've got a lot of, we have a lot of stores that are opening. Just because a store closes doesn't mean it closed because it just couldn't make it in Fountain Hills. Maybe the donut shop closed because people prefer donuts from Basha's because they're good and they're cheaper. Who knows? But look at how many nail shops we have, and they're all doing well. You open a good shop here, look how long Gridley's has been here. I'm also optimistic about the Target Center. The Target Center was just bought by a new company, and it's not just a holding company. We've got a chance to meet the representative. They're going to look at filling that center. They're not going to do what the previous holding company did. They were out-of-state owners. They were just interested in just collecting rent. They raised the rent, which is why we lost our famous footwear store, because they raised the rent. This company is actually looking at filling the stores. So I'm optimistic. They're already talking about what they might put into the old video store, what they might put into the old KFC. So they're working at that. You know, you impose a tax on people, and you're taking from one pocket and you're putting it into the other, because the money that they give you in a tax, they don't have the money to spend outside. And there's a lot of people in this town that are on fixed incomes, and I'm not going to tax them anymore, so I'm voting no on this. Do we have any other? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Okay. If there's no other comments, I'll take a roll call vote.
Mayor, if I may, just a point of clarity. In the packet part of the information talked about, we're mentioning 22,000 folks in town, but the fee would go per household. So you're talking 12,500 folks. So that changes the math significantly. And once again, at $2, just for example, and I'm not advocating for this, but I think it's worth discussion, at $2, you're talking, you know, $24 a year, and it adds value to the town, you know? We've lost our development fees, you know? We're losing HERF money. It's just on and on and on and on and on. We're having to do bonds because we're bleeding, and our infrastructure is being delayed in terms of road repairs, so forth and so on. So I just want to clarify that it's 12,500, and it would be per household. And with respect to billing, billing can be an expensive proposition, but with such a low billing amount, we don't have to bill monthly. You can do it quarterly. You can do it twice a year. So there's a lot of workarounds, and I'm on the fence with this, but I think it's worth a look at really drilling down on it, getting all our questions answered, and then deciding once and for all, yes or no. You know, this has never been brought to a vote. That's why we've been talking about it since 2007. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to add that.
Any other comments? All right. Can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Elke?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yates?
I'll take a look. Aye.
Councilmember Leger?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Dickey?
Aye.
And Mayor Kavanaugh?
Nay.
Mayor 5-1?
All right. Item number seven. No, we're up to six. Sorry. Six, consideration of authorizing town staff and the town attorney to proceed with legal action regarding complaints against Chaparral City Water Company. And Andrew?
Madam Mayor, members of the council, this is a follow-up to our e-session discussion from two weeks ago. So obviously, we're not going to want to have too much of a discussion about the discussion that we held in e-session. I don't want to violate the law in that respect, but if you have generic questions about it, this is moving forward as discussed. The motion that we were looking for this evening is directing the town manager, town staff, town attorney to move forward with legal action regarding the complaints and authorize the mayor to sign the complaint to be filed.
Okay. Discussion? Motion?
Mayor, so moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mayor, 6-0?
There was no one who wanted to speak on that, right? I think so. You would have told me. All right. Moving on to number seven is legislative bulletin. Ken, do you have anything?
Again, Mayor Kavanaugh, members of the council, this is going to be perennial on there until we start seeing more movement. Right now, we haven't heard of any movement, other than what the league has already approved, and you've reviewed that.
Right.
We'll continue to have it on every council meeting in the future.
Yeah, we'll be having the first league meeting in November. Then I should have something for everybody to look at. Okay, then, let's see. Anything else that you have, Ken, that you need to talk to us about?
No, Mayor.
Then, does the council have anything under number nine that you would like to say? Councilwoman Dickey?
Thanks. Just real quickly, I went to the Arizona Leadership Forum on September 19th, which I think last year I went. Jay Shlum was there too. But it's a basically leadership organization founded by National Bank of Arizona, Phoenix Philanthropy Group, and Freeport-Mackhamran. It's a collaboration of Arizona leaders. It's become Arizonans who take leadership seriously. They're a nonpartisan group of community and civic leaders dedicated to elevating the conversation regarding the issues that are important to the citizens of Arizona. We're probably 800 or so people there. It's a nice group, and the panels were a good combination of business, people, nonprofit, and some government type. And educations, Barry Brim and Marty Schultz and Kimber, I'm sure you know her, Lanning. They, none of them were mincing words, but they were still optimistic. Michael Bidwell said that we need to reset the Arizona brand and to try to get away from some of the Daily Show mentions, and brought up the Super Bowl, and that that injects $500 million into the region. So when he said region, that, you know, should have caused everybody to perk up, because as you know, probably Scottsdale is doing a whole bunch of things, so it's not just in Glendale. Laty Corr, obviously, was there, had some interesting things to say about education and good job recovery. Arizona's having a little bit of trouble being behind some of the, most of the other states as far as our traction and our ability to recover in a robust way. One of the other things that was interesting is that they showed all the states and how many people were there who were natives, as opposed to people that continue to come from other places. And Arizona has stayed the same since 1900, pretty much. It's like 38% are native Arizonans. So it's seen as a flaw, which I'm not sure, because it's good to know that people come here, but it's seen as a flaw in that the people, the young people, don't stay in Arizona as much. I'm going to say this because I can't resist, because these were all businessmen who said shrinking government is not an economic plan, which I thought was an interesting thing for them to say in that sort of an arena. They said that they thought we'd lost our political and our civic appetite to dream and that we are letting our assets drift away. The other thing that they said that I'm sure we would all agree with is that cities, again, have been pointed out as leaders, and Mayor of Phoenix, Mayor of Tucson were there, Bram Resnick with Channel 12. So they said some really great things about being part of a city. So I think we're in a good place.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?